I have a motion by board member Baker and a second by board member Parker. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving on to approval of agenda, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by board member Ryder, a second by board member Tulkey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. There were no new conflicts of interest to report. Move on to seven A through D, approval consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by board member Baker, a second by board member Parker. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, items seven A through D, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move on to the reports of the president. Thank you, Rich.
Chairman Nicholson, member or President Nicholson, excuse me, uh, members of the board. Uh, obviously not President Griggs, but, uh, Rich Clune, Vice President of Finance. Uh, President Griggs is at another meeting. Uh, will probably join us a little bit later in this session. But I wanted to kick off, uh, the reports for today. And the first one we have before you is a report of our Student Government Association. And we have with us, uh, a student advisor, student government advisor, and a couple of the student government, uh, leadership representatives. So I'll have them come forward and introduce themselves and have them tell you a little bit more about their activities and what they do for Southeast Tech and what happens on campus. So it's over to them.
Yep, come on up.
And I'm just, um, wanna sing the praises of a couple of our staff members too who are with us today. So, um, Chelsa Raish and Elizabeth Harder. So at Southeast Tech, what's kinda unique, um, is that when our students come in, they are assigned a academic advisor or faculty member, but they also are assigned a student success advisor. And so Chelsa and Elizabeth are student success advisors. And then the great thing about high, higher ed is you have lots of slashes in your title. So they advise the students, they teach our student success seminars, um, they register students, and then these two also work with the Student Government Association. Plan everything from intermurals to Zumba to all those fun activities on campus. So they do a great job and they're here today with a couple of the executive members of our Student Government Association. So I just can't say enough good things about this group, so thank you.
Um, so my name is Francine Verpolin. I'm a second year in the Surgical Technology Program and I am this year's Vice President of the Student Government Association.
Hi, I'm Shelby Clark and I am also a second year search tech student and I am the Social Chair Executive. Uh, I just wanna say thank you for letting us be here today to present to you what we do in SGA.
Um, so this is kinda just, um, the executives that we have, um, this year. You can kinda see the different, um, programs that everyone is in and everyone is, I think, a second year, so, yeah. Um, so we have, we have someone that runs Campus Improvements and we do a bunch of different projects that are supposed to benefit campus and help improve campus basically. So we have some long-term projects, so like the DIS golf course is actually a three-year project. Um, and the Land Serbing Program mapped out the turf, ma- mapped the course, excuse me. And the turf management, uh, program put the baskets in. Um, and the final phase is to put the T-boxes in and that should be done in 2020. Um, we also have the housing proposal and that they're actually working on right now, um, to expand housing. So I don't know if you guys know, but there's, you know, on-campus housing and we're looking to expand that so we can have more students on campus. Um, and then another long-term project is the eco-friendly, uh, water bottle fountains. They're kinda the, the ones that you hold underneath the water fountain and that's what, uh, that was initiated this spring and we hope to, you know, keep going with that, so. Um, some of the short-term projects, um, we are looking to get some handicapped accessibility into the hub. Um, it's a future proposal that we're currently working on in Campus Improvements. Um, and we also had the parking lot restripped and potholes filled, um, and that was done this summer, so, yeah.
So next we have intermurals, which we personally participate in. Um, there is volleyball and then basketball in the winter and we actually just finished up with volleyball. Um, we loved it because it's just a good way for us to get out of school and kind of stop doing some homework, you know, take a break, kinda relax. Uh, we did have eighteen teens. Uh, we do different, uh, theme nights, like you could see there was me on and Hawaii USA and they were just, um, different themes every week, which made it really fun. And if you had the best dress, you get a prize, you know, as a gift card to our bookstore or something like that. Um, we really loved it, just a way to get a break and it was really good for us.
Um, and we also have student clubs and these are all student ran, so there's no, not really anyone that, um, I mean, they kind of oversee everything, but it's usually, it's mostly student ran. So, um, we have the American Sign Language Club, um, we have Campus Crusades for Christ, Gamers Club, Roots, uh, Multicultural Club, um, Southeast Tech Pride, Veterans Club, and Yoga. And like I said, these are all student ran, so they usually meet, um, kinda depends on the club, but some of them meet weekly and some of them meet monthly, it kinda just depends on the clubs, so. And those are some more of the clubs right there, so. Um, and so this is an example from the Roots Club. Um, they did, like, they do like different ethnic values and holidays and that sort of thing and they promote, uh, they promote diversity. So an example that they did was they did a, they did a Day of the Dead display. Yeah, so different things like that they like, that they do for Southeast Tech. Um, and then Student of the Month, um, and we also do Employee of the Month. It recognizes students of faculty, um, for their hard work and dedication at Southeast Tech. Um, so this is, I mean, someone nominates them, um, by another student or it could be another faculty member. And then we're vote, it's voted by us, the executive board. And then, um, at the next, uh, General Assembly, SGA meeting, we just, uh, give them a plaque and we give them a special recognition. And then, um, this year's winner also receives like a free parking spot. So I know parking is kinda tough sometimes in school, so.
Okay, so one of the events that we put on, uh, during the school year is the Fall Picnic. As you can see, we do it at the beginning of the school year just to kinda kick off and get everybody together so that they can start to co-mingle and kinda see who, who they're gonna be with for the next year. Um, we did have Pavo Serve, which is an on-campus, um, food service, thank you, I'll come back, word, food service that we have and they serve over nine hundred students and faculty. We had different groups like the National Guard, the Army, representatives from USFCOM and have a booth and talk to students and had different activities like the, um, axe throwing, joy staying and basketball. And then it was just a good opportunity for everybody to get to know each other. And then another event that we have at the beginning of the school year, usually it's in August, is we have a Backyard Bash. This is a yearly tradition that we have. Um, it's mostly for the students that live in the housing, because it's, it's held at the student housing in the back area. Uh, we have yard games and then Big Ritz BBQ usually caters for us and then we do a movie. Uh, usually we project it on a big screen outside and everybody can kinda sit around in the grass. This year because of the weather, we did have to move it inside, but luckily we have a theater that, um, caters to that. So this is just another event for everybody to kinda get together and families are welcome, faculty and students.
Okay, so the newest thing that we just did is the Laundry Basket Drive. Um, we decided to name it Feeding Southeast Tech. Um, so it's a campus-wide drive, uh, to help those in need. And it includes like non-perishable foods, canned goods, um, cleaning supplies, uh, just hygiene supplies. And then we also had some gift cards turn in as well. And we kinda just threw this together and we ended up with fifty-six laundry baskets, so it was pretty incredible, so. Um, we are currently handing out those baskets to students on, students in need on Southeast Tech, so we're able to provide some, uh, goods for those people, so, yeah.
So one of the things that I take care of as the Social Chair Executive is I put events together like the Talent Show. Um, we come together and, you know, plan the decorations, plan the food, um, pick judges and things like that. And this year, uh, we actually just had it a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we showcase students' talents, so it's a good way for them to come and show what they can do. We have a lot of good singers, we had some magic acts and, um, some, the baton throwing, which was really cool. Um, our MC was our President Kyle this year and then we do try to incorporate the faculty. We had two teachers and then I was a judge myself. Um, and then we also had two kids judges, which is something new that we've kinda incorporated to try to get the community and the families of our students involved. And they picked the Children's Choice Award. Uh, we had a really great turnout this year and I look forward to hearing about the years to come, so it's really fun. And there are some pictures of our decorations. Another thing, um, the hypnotist and magician, uh, we, this generally is in the spring, just kind of another way to get students together. Um, it's a lot like the Talent Show, except it's more, we just have one gentleman come in who is really entertaining and he's been with us for a few years now. Um, yeah, it's open to families and students and faculty and it's just a good way for everybody to get together.
Um, and then we also hold pennies for patients. I'm sure you guys know what that is. Um, it's held every year, um, usually in the spring, uh, right when they come back to school. And it raises, uh, money for those patients, uh, who have blood cancer, so like leukemia, for example. Um, and our twenty nineteen grand total was one thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. And then those are the placings of each program and, um, how well that they did. Um, and then you can also have the option to decorate, uh, your coin box if you want to and you get the option to win some treats if you like, so. Yeah, so Architectural Engineering did a really good job this year, obviously, so, yeah.
So, another event, I feel like we have a lot of events, honestly. And it's fine, cause it gets everybody together and I feel like it kind of caters to a fun, like, different groups. Uh, we have the Spring Fling, which is held April twenty-fourth of twenty nineteen. It'll probably be the same next year, roughly around that time, close to the end of the year. Um, last year, I think this was the first year that we did this, um, we had a car show. So, uh, students or outside, they could bring in their car and showcase it and, um, just, I don't, it was just a lot, like, it was really great. A lot of people showed up. We were kind of hoping that we'd have a good turnout. We weren't quite sure how it was gonna go, but it ended up being really great. The food trucks were present, um, it was really good. I think, I hope this is something that carries over because it did cater to a different group that may not wanna be, you know, in the other events that we did, so I think that really helped. Uh, and I think we kinda just wanted to talk about what SGA meant to us. Um, we're really involved with our school, which I think that's a goal that we had from the beginning, but being on the board, it gets us out of our comfort zone. I can say we were both pretty quiet at the beginning of the year and now, uh, we've kinda stepped out and had to venture out and talk in front of crowds and learn how to be professional and be a leader. And I really appreciate Chelsa and Elizabeth and, um, everything that they have done for us and for SGA, so, yes.
She, she put it perfectly, so I don't have anything else to say. Do you guys have any questions for us?
I do. First of all, thank you for coming and presenting us. We love to see the students, it's really fun for us as board members to have that interaction with you. And by having all those events, I think that's awesome you do that because otherwise I would think students kinda get pigeonholed into their program and they don't meet the other students, so it's a good way to have those campus-wide activities. The food, um, the Laundry Basket Feeding, I just think, I think student or people don't realize in higher ed that food insecurity is a huge issue. And I just, I really applaud you guys for taking that on and helping your other fellow students by doing that. My question would be, how, are you elected by the school you're in? Or, cause I did see you're elected every year, but how, who elects you to be on the SGA?
Um, so it kinda, it, it kinda depends generally. Mostly the General Assembly, the SGA members, whoever come to the meetings, um, they'll elect, you know, say Fran said, well, I nominate Shelby for this position.
Got it.
I'd have to accept and then, um, we'd give a little speech and then it would be a professional vote, you know, we'd leave the room if there are multiple of us. Uh, sometimes there are point parts where you kinda just step into the position if it's maybe we lost a member over the summer, um, and then it's offered to us and things like that. So it's, students can nominate each other, teachers can nominate students, um, you can nominate yourself. It's just something like, if that's what you wanna do, so, thank you for doing that.
Um, and also for, I know it's for president, vice president, I'm not sure for the other, is it, I think Secretary and President as well, right? The first top four, um, we have to write like an essay explaining why we feel that we're fit for the position and then they actually do a vote on STINet, which is our, um, website. And then you vote for whoever, you know, has been nominated for that position, so, yeah. Yep.
All students.
Yep.
And thank you to the advisors, I know that's extra duty for both of you to take this on, so I appreciate that. Okay, well, thank you for doing it.
Um, I was just gonna add, I think that maybe a really big misconception about tech schools in general is that when you choose a tech school over, say, a four-year university, that you're kinda foregoing the social aspect of being able to go to the university and have the college experience. And so I think that this was such a wonderful example of how you're not really giving anything up because you can have the intermural experience, you can have the backyard barbecues, you can have all the things that maybe you really want on that social side and still get a great education and go for shorter and have so many career options. And so I really appreciated all the information that you shared because I think that that's a really big misconception with maybe students and the community in general about what a tech school has to offer, so thank you for sharing all that. Um, I think you had a little, kinda small comment about this, but I wanted to point out that, um, you guys are students and you're both surgical techs, right? So you don't have any plans of going on and doing event planning or marketing? Like, that's not what you're studying, but those are all of the skills that you have learned by participating in this role, um, on student government. So, um, kudos to you guys that even though it's not something that long-term is in your career plans, maybe, maybe you'll get to plan something for your surgical group. Um, and so I just think those are, those are skills that you can't just pick up, um, without truly diving in and experiencing. So thank you for your leadership and for, um, kinda going outside of maybe your comfort zone of what you normally would do. Um, and I just have a random question, where do you hold your intermurals at?
You look like George McGovern.
I think it's, yeah, McGov- is it McGovern? It's a middle school, I think is what it is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's every Wednesday, so.
Okay.
Yep.
And so you just have the gym reserved and for whatever the sport is, if it's basketball or?
There's three courts, so they have, what, six teams going at one time? So they have the game at six thirty, again at seven thirty, and then another one at like eight fifteen or something like that, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much for coming, it was very great to hear your presentation.
I mean, and Pearl was saying this too, but it's those soft skills that, you know, you're learning as being part of this group that, you know, regardless of what you go into as your career path, you'll always take with you. So, yeah, it's great experience and it's a long to have to, to school.
Exactly.
You're definitely putting a lot of yourselves into this organization and you get so much out of it. It's, I'm sure you've already started to sense and feel and I just wanna affirm you that you are creating an atmosphere that's fun for your classmates and you're doing that with your events as well as your fundraising and so it is a fun atmosphere, um, and you're getting people involved, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, all I'd say is, it's great that you make the culture of, of the campus more fun. And so you're including people that might not have been able to participate or wanted to, but you're, so many different options to be a part of it. So thanks for your commitment and your volunteerism to do this, cause I know you're busy.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the SGA report?
So, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich, are you up?
You don't have to feel like you have to stay here.
Yeah, this is the boring part.
No, this is not the budgeting part, but, uh, it might be the boring part, you know?
Yeah, you won't hurt our feelings if you leave, so, we're used to that. You just need to hit yours together, go. Did you guys have a pen drive that you need to take out of the computer or did you actually put it on? You got it, okay.
President Nicholson, members of the board, uh, first report that I have for you is the, it's a little bit out of sequence. Typically I do an all-report on a quarterly basis. Uh, we extended it out a little bit, went July through October. Uh, just kind of a timing difference of when the charges actually go to the general ledger. So the July through, uh, September, the first quarter was not a whole lot of activity, not a whole lot of information on there. So I thought, let's push it out another month and it'll give you a better perspective of where we're at in terms of our billings. And it flows from what, uh, the board report I did a couple of months ago. And we were really looking at where are we at, are we on target in terms of our revenue? Um, our state aid, those two big main sources. And if you recall, I, I mentioned we're a little bit behind in terms of budget, in terms of tuitioning fees. We're right on track in terms of our state aid, so those are our two largest components. Um, I think the, the upshot to it is, and we continue to be, uh, pacing slightly ahead of where we were last year. Uh, so all things considered, that is a, uh, very much a positive thing rather than be talking about, uh, a decline in enrollment over the prior year, so that, that's a good thing. Like I said, we're still just a little bit assured of where we were at on budget, but we'll continue to monitor that, uh, the spring enrollments and the information that Megan's group puts together, that pacing of being ahead of where we were last year is continuing, so. Gotta make this fairly straightforward and, and simple. Talk a little bit about, uh, and from a very high level, uh, the post-secondary fund. Uh, when you, when you look at that revenue component, you, you see that on tuition, we're roughly at forty-eight percent. And we think about how our tuition flows in terms of our budget aspect. It's having fall and spring and then a little bit in the summer, so that's on pace. That's where we would expect to be. When you look at the comparables, I always tend to look at the totals. Uh, this time period last year, uh, year to day, we were roughly thirty-four percent of budget. This year we're at thirty-six percent of budget. And some of that's just related to, uh, some pieces that came in, some timing differences. Uh, when you look at some of the other state revenue, uh, that five hundred thousand dollars came in for the Go-Ed and, uh, that tax support program. That was budgeted last year, but it didn't come in last year, so that's why you see that variance when you look at that other state, uh, revenue, sixteen point eight five percent in FY nineteen, but it's fifty percent of, of budget. So overall, like I said, we're on track in terms of our, our revenues, a little bit behind on the tuitioning fees, but, uh, not having a lot of revival at this point. Expenditure side of things, probably easiest to just look at the bottom line. You think about where, uh, we're four months into the fiscal year, a third of the year. So in our, in terms of our operating expenditures, we're at twenty-seven point nine one percent of budget. Expenditures tend to move more cyclical than, say, the revenues do, so you can kinda get a better measurement that this is very comparable and it's very favorable rather than being at thirty-three percent where you expect kind of that even flow throughout the year. It looks like there's a little bit of some realized savings in there to this point. So there's some positives there. Some of it again comes back when you look at some of the wage categories. You know, there were some, those increases are budgeted in there, so you're gonna see some favorable variances coming out of that. But again, you look at it, it's not huge differences, uh, so, so we're on track expenditure-wise, uh, where we think we need to be. So, uh, I think, speaking of metaphors, uh, we are comfortably treading water. We're not on the pontoon out there, but we are very comfortable in the water where we're at, so. Uh, again, very high level, uh, on the post-secondary fund, uh, as we're, kind of, set. And, uh, I think as we move into the next months, I'll probably give you another activity that, kind of, some of that milk, as we get through the end of December, we'll see where we compared to last year because that has a significant play in our overall revenue results. While, uh, maybe revenue's down, but if you have a smaller milk or a smaller shrink, that mail has some of that impact, uh, the overall revenue, so. Uh, bookstore fund, that's, uh, tracking right in line with where we were last year. Obviously that's just, uh, you know, text books and math stats. Uh, you'll notice a pretty significant difference on the expenditure category when you look at the items purchased for resale. So that's just a timing difference of when we are purchasing and acquiring the inventory for, uh, the next term. You can see last year, we were at one point four million, this year we're at eight sixty-five. Just a timing difference of when those days are being created and then it's already being placed. So you'll see that reflected down in the bottom line as well. When you look at the, uh, revenue over the end of the expense, you know, it looks like we're five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars at having bookstore today, whereas compared to last year, we're about fifty-four thousand dollars down. It just has to do with that cost of goods served out and coming through later. Uh, food service, uh, this truly is something that's very comparable year to year. You think about when students are on campus and doing that, so I think it's a positive sign when you look at our sales being up significantly over where they were this time last year. Uh, roughly fifteen thousand dollars, so that's a good thing. Uh, if you recall, the budget has a subsidy coming from the post-secondary fund. The more that food service fund can carry its own weight, obviously, the less that the post-secondary fund has to provide the systems for. The other component that, that we tend to take a look at, and this isn't a perfect analysis cause we're not doing inventories on a monthly basis and we're not, uh, bringing it into full accrual on payables and that, but when you look at, uh, food costs, uh, they're down roughly ten percent, so that's a, that's a good thing too. So we're, um, shrinking some ways, some loss associated with that, so that has a positive return, uh, at the end of the day. Overall, it's, it's up, uh, when you look at where we were compared to last year. Um, still a deficit. Another thing I wanna mention on this is, you also have to remember, and I say this every time, but just as a reminder, the revenue always lags a lot, expenditures are on track. So you're seeing revenue through, or expenditures through the first four months, the revenue only the first three months of what's being reported on the ledger. So if you were to take what our October revenue is, it exceeds that forty-two thousand dollar deficit, so it's really setting in a positive position, at least as we're, as of today. November will be a good month for us, December will not be, uh, with the break and the time away. Obviously the volume of activity that you have, uh, will significantly decrease. Little bit to that extent in January, we'll have a time to pick up again. So we'll probably see some positive results in the next month's report when you see a drip, dip back down again and then come back up as we gather new experiences. Overall, I'm pleased with the moving of the record. Childcare fund, that's a, another fund that is being subsidized, uh, to a small extent by the post-secondary fund. There's a thirty-one thousand dollar grant that's gonna, that'll take place. Uh, revenue's down a little bit year to year. Again, that just has to do with enrollment, like, uh, utilization of the facility by students or, or staff or, uh, Seaford School just group staff. So a little bit down there, but expenditure's down quite a bit and that just has to do with some turnover and some different delivery models, uh, at least in the short term, using a little more part-time work-study, uh, to provide those services and then as they get back up and get staffed again. So we'll probably see, uh, full-time wages start to pace at a little faster pace than what they are currently, but again, this is another fund that, at least as we start out the year through the first four months, that's much more favorable than where we were at this time last year. Thirty-four thousand dollar deficit, where this year we're at twenty thousand dollars. So that's a, a pretty significant change as it relates to that fund as well. So, yeah, very high level, very quick, uh, kind of a vanilla type of report in terms of nothing out of the ordinary, nothing to surprise. Um, I think President Nicholson, you had asked a question about some additional state funding, uh, a couple of meetings ago. Uh, did follow up with Scott, I kinda actually forewarned him when he was here. I said, be prepared that that question might be, might be coming up, uh, his. His answer back was, so I haven't seen the money. Long story short, so I haven't seen it. But it involves some changes in what BFNM could do. And they were focused on the delivery of the revenue's budget address. So since that's now passed, I can start hitting them up a little bit more and say, where's that at, what's going to happen? If you looked at the budget presentation slides and everything, there was a deduction in this current year of about four hundred eighty thousand dollars in technical institute funds. And I thought, uh-oh, well, that's not that money, and it's not.
Okay, good.
I verified that. What that comes from is when the state appropriates money in the prior budget, it's based on an FTE basis. So we're looking at a twenty budget based on FY nineteen, FTE, which isn't completed yet. So when they do that, they establish the rate to appropriate that amount of money. If as a system, the FTE comes in lower, there's going to be an excess of that appropriation. If it, FTE came in higher, then there would be a shortfall. So historically, if there's a shortfall, the state finds the money and moves as whole on a PSA basis. The other side of it is if there is the FTE less than what was anticipated, that's appropriation that the state could look to move elsewhere. That's that four seventy-nine.
That's good to know.
Yeah, so that's those differentials. I think one potential thing that's kind of out there in the still lane, in the weeds yet that is a little bit unknown relates to state tuition assistance for National Guard leaders. State appropriates a certain dollar amount, I think it's two hundred and fourteen, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, something along those lines. The fall of utilization across the system ate up about eighty percent of that funds. So there's going to be a shortfall as we head into the spring. Don't quite know how that is going to be addressed, what the expectation's going to be, if that's going to be the tech institutes have to absorb that or they're going to seek out and look elsewhere. My recommendation is to use some of that excess appropriation when you direct that. But obviously, it was earmarked a different direction. So we'll just kind of wait and see. Not huge dollar amounts, it's not a huge thing, but there's probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall system-wide in that appropriation. So we're just kind of waiting to see what happens with that. And no more as we get into spring, so. And speaking of the budget address yesterday, I think you probably followed and you probably had discussion on the T twelve side and the no adjustment in the PSA. We don't have the statutory requirement to do that, like the T twelve has. But typically, our first student allocation adjustment has moved the same way. It moves with that inflation effect. So a lot of days between now and the end of the session, so we just have to wait and see what happens. But in absence of that PSA allocation, it really comes down to what's our FTE count as a system? But not only as a system, what is our FTE account in comparison to the rest of the schools? So we could still see an increase in our state aid if the other schools had a deep climb in their enrollment. So it's just kind of a, again, wait and see what happens. And then no more is, we kind of get through our spring enrollment, they start to project out and you'll get that, that access. So, you know, clearly it hasn't been bad. And you don't have that increasing funding, so again, we just have to address that. Which, after this report, I'll kind of leave and some discussion on our budget development. Any specific questions related to the various financial reports?
My question you answered, so we knew what's going on with us.
I, I think another thing when you look at that first slide and you look at the cash balance, you see with the district general ledger, we're holding about seven million dollars in cash as of the end of August. Also, if you look at that consolidated trust and agency, there's about one point six million that's yet to come over. So that'll show up next month in this revenue calculations. Maybe there'll be any kind of patterns with the receivables. So, you know, we're looking at some cash balances that are twenty-five, twenty-eight percent of our overall budget, which is a really good position to be in. But this is probably also our high point in cash for the year. So now we're going to see that consume that. We've received two state aid payments, we still got two more to come. We're going to influx of cash again in the spring. But it gets to be pretty lean in May, June, July. And then out of this, because we see that September, September component of the year. But again, revenue isn't that far off. It's going to keep on track, so we're not having a big impact on utilizing that cash for staff, so we're still in a solid fiscal position.
Do you have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the July through October two thousand nineteen finance report? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Onto FY twenty-one budget goals and timeline.
The second report that I have before you is an executive summary of the budget guidelines timeline. And really flows from partly what we talked about as we head into the next cycle. But the guidelines that are presented or developed right from the criteria that's related to accreditation through the Higher Learning Commission. So this is the goals and the summaries that we presented related to criteria number five, which calls for resources planning and institutional effectiveness. So when it speaks to these goals, institution has a well-developed process in terms of budgeting and monitoring. That's one of the things that each C comes out and works at for accreditation. Report, I guess, is part of that, that monitoring system. So these are various components of it that we work on as, as we deal our budgets and develop them. The specific guidelines, again, talk about meeting mission. I think that's probably the simplest way to encapsulate it. So as a decision-making, it was a fulfilling our mission of workforce development and make decisions to power our job. And like everything else, and I always tell the ministry team, you're probably tired of hearing it, but, you know, you have all the money to do anything you want. You just don't have the money to do everything that you want. So establishing priority depends on the aspect of it. Timelines, very similar to what we've done in the past. We may accelerate this a little bit than trying to get this budget done. I think the last, last year we wound up pushing that back a little bit. We're going to try to stay on task this year. There's some reasons behind wanting to be that, trying to have everything in place in terms of what are we anticipating our expenditure needs of going to be ahead of the legislative process. The upshot to that is as we get into the end of the legislative session, if additional resources become available. It's now talking about what priorities can we now fund? What things did we previously identify that we fund? Historically, we've kind of gone the other way. We've kind of just put everything out there and we'll start deciding what we want to take away and what we can afford. So we're kind of going into this next budget cycle with an approach that state funding is potentially a zero increase. Obviously, we don't know what the State Board of Technical Education's going to do in terms of tuition and fees. We may be able to have an influx there if we need to address some priorities that are identified associated with that. But really kind of looking at developing a very flat budget, no increases. Might be some new allocation between initiatives and programs that are out there. But this will give us the time to do that and formulate some of those things and then additional money becomes available, we'll always have. Okay, let's insert this, we know this can come in. So a little different approach than what we've done in the past. And hopefully that maybe we're a little more positive about it than... I'm always here all the time, you know, we keep cutting, we keep cutting. I don't consider to cut because never had it in the first place. It's, you just put it down and then you cut it. But this is a, taking a little different step. Questions, concerns, or comments on our timelines or process?
That's good. Do you have a motion to approve?
So, I have a motion and a second on FY twenty-one budget goals and timeline.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and same, motion carries. Onto December graduation update. Thank you, Rich.
President Nicholson and members of the board, we be remiss not to mention December graduation. So that's an exciting time for us. It's not only the most wonderful time of the year, but the culmination of working with our students and seeing them walk across the stage is why we do what we do, so. And our December graduation takes place on Friday, December thirteenth at the Sioux Falls Convention Center. I'm sure a couple of you will be joining us for that event. It starts at five o'clock. This year, we have a total of a hundred and eighty-six candidates for graduation, a hundred and twenty-eight for the associate's degree and fifty-eight for a one-year diploma. So we do have a good number for December graduation. And our December graduation is, if you've been to the one at the arena, it's very large. You know what the arena's like. The December graduation is a little bit more intimate. It's a nice ceremony, so we're looking forward to that. Diana Vanderwoody from Sanford Health, she's their HR Senior Executive Director of Leadership Education Development. She will be our commencement speaker on the thirteenth. And then the last couple of graduations, we've been awarding our industry partner award. And next week, we'll be giving it to Smithfield Foods. So we're excited about that. As you know, in two thousand sixteen, they launched their Learners to Leaders program, and we know all about that program. And most recently, they contributed to help us start our vet tech program. And we have a good number of applicants for that program for next fall, so we're looking forward to that. And then Mark Wiggs and Scott Reed, whom many of you probably are familiar with, will be there with us for that day. Scott, right now, is Chair of our Advisory Council, and he's also on our Foundation Board. So, yeah, we look forward to seeing you there, and it's a good way to end the semester before Christmas. Any questions on graduation?
No, thank you. I know board member Baker and Tulkey will be representing the board there that evening. So, thank you. I have a prior commitment with the Indian Education Committee, but it'll be a great event. So thank you very much.
And it's, you know, the graduates and the faculty and speakers and everybody's in the same room getting ready for December graduation. So it's a great opportunity to just have the opportunity to meet people and, right? New year, they're starting their careers, so it's good timing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve the December graduation update report? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and same, motion carries. Do you have a motion to move into executive sessions, SDCL one twenty-five dash two, print one?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll move into executive session.